I'm on.
Hey, Shauna.
You got a prayer question up there along with us?
Uh-huh. And that would be your.
On our cloud.
That was the long one, the one tonight.
Oh, man, we just reversed them.
Right?
How many?
Um, I think there's like seven, but it's only it's four different.
That's all.
That's not bad.
That's gonna play any.
A piece of cake.
I think there's usually last year.
We used to have twenty. Twenty or twenty-five.
Oh, wow.
We don't have anything to do with that. What about the guy, the guy has called me.
Two days sometimes.
We were able to help him a little bit, not much, but they're still.
Friend that gets here nine o'clock.
Just you just hit that one this year.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, it's nine o'clock. I'm gonna call a meeting of the Cottonton County Commissioners to order. Um, if you'd please rise for the pledge of allegiance, I'll read us.
I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
Okay. If there's a a need for a public comment, you can submit it in person, or you can call the phone numbers at six oh five eight eight two six two four eight or six oh five eight eight two six two nine seven. And if you have a cell phone, if you could please silence it. And if you have to take a call, we could appreciate if you do it in the hallway. Thank you. Um, item three, is there any conflict of interest?
No, no.
Okay. Item four, need a motion to approve the agenda. Okay, most motion by Van Duzen, second by Gable uh, to approve the agenda. Any additions or corrections to the agenda? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item five, uh, need a motion to approve the minutes.
Come on.
A motion by Johnson, second by Gable to approve the minutes for the April second meeting. Any additions or questions to those? If not, all signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, item six is uh need action to approve a resolution to uh I think that's reconvey property taxes by deed proceedings and uh I think you might as well come on up. We just state your name and tell us.
Christine Carpenter.
Yep.
Have a seat. Talking to the mic. So everybody knows who you are.
Christine Carpenter.
Thank you.
And you're here to uh take care of these tax. Uh, you wanna explain that Brenda?
Right, so uh, the treasurer had taken this property on tax deed and this has been done previously uh January of twenty twenty-one, actually where the individual pays up the back taxes and all the fees and then the board has the authority or um option to reconvey this property back to the landowner.
And you've already paid in the check and everything's good and
Yep.
Okay.
Treasurer to receive that.
Very good.
I'll second.
Okay, a motion by Gable, second by uh Van Duzen to uh prove this resolution. Is there any more discussion or?
Just that we are in good standing currently with everything.
Yes, the treasurer sent all that information out to you. Um so yes, and then after this is approved, then the treasurer will prepare the deed and finish that process up.
So do you understand what's gonna happen then?
Yes, I, yes, I do.
And thank you for following up and giving us this explanation and and that helps.
Yes, thank you very much. I appreciate it. I won't do it again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Okay.
I need to do anything with the treasurer, you'll lose.
I don't believe uh she'll prepare the deed and then it'll be reconveyed over to you through a tax deed. And if if there is, I have your phone number, we'll get be in contact with you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, our monthly reports, we'll start out with the auditor, Brenda, you'll.
All right, yes, good morning. Busy times, election season is upon us, working on uh the ballots have been created, working on getting those orders placed because if all goes well, early voting starts next Friday, April nineteenth. So that time is getting really close. Um also then I'll be working on uh filling the precincts since we will have a countywide election, we, everything will be utilized. Um, we have combined as many as we can, but obviously every polling place will be open. And I have also began uh or I sent out the twenty twenty-four budget worksheets, which all of you have those on your desk as well, so feel free to work together, however you're going to do that to complete your budget, and so that is what's in process also. Other than that, I think I'm good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, we could have uh Shauna come up for the equalization office.
Good morning.
Morning.
Actually, can I do one more thing since Sarah's here? You can sit down. I have my new employee yet. Can I bring her in really quick?
Oh, sure.
We'll take this moment.
How are you doing, Ash?
It's interesting when I get done in here and I go in my office, I hear myself talk.
Let's keep it later.
Yes.
All right, this is Morgan Cunningham. This is the board. Charlie Waterman, Lee Gable is over there, Troy, Martin and Ray. Nice to meet you. Yeah, Sarah, sure. I know Sarah. Going very well.
Welcome, Owen.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Say your name one more time.
Morgan Cunningham.
Morgan Cunningham.
Cunningham, yep.
Okay, so we are holding our county consolidated boards this afternoon and this evening. And basically that would, after boards are finalized, that kind of completes our twenty twenty-four assessments. Um, and then we basically get all the, any changes that are made in and send all of our stuff off to the department revenue for them to finalize our twenty twenty-four um assessment year. And then now we are already starting to work on the twenty twenty-five, we're working on new plots and splits that have come through. And then the appraisers are going to be starting on the summer reappraisal. They'll be out in the field probably by the end of this month because the weather's been pretty good. Um, but this year we'll be doing where did I have it down? Phipps, Graceland and Henry Townships. And then this summer we'll actually complete our county reappraisal. We started in eighteen and it's taken us six years, but we had to take one off for um COVID, so basically five years to complete the whole county, so then we'll be starting back in town or at the lake. We have to kind of look to see where we need to go. So that's our plan right now.
Okay.
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 That's all I got.
We'll see you this afternoon.
This evening.
Hi.
Morning, Sarah.
Morning, Sarah.
Just a few extra ones, Sarah.
Okay.
Few extra ones here.
Out today. Right.
I need one.
Oh, I thought I thought my right hand extra. Sorry.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, okay, hi, good morning. Um, okay, first our data things. So we just got this report yesterday for the last month and we realized like our numbers are are off for the last month as far as the contacts and things. We've been talking to the Hubline Center about changing how we're doing things and so how we did it last month isn't how we're gonna do it next month because the numbers don't actually the total client contacts per by month, that is probably more accurate now. But then how the services recorded and the unique individuals, that's, those numbers are down um because of some changes that we made, so we'll be looking at that again. Um, the number the year-to-date costs and things are, it's all correct, it's just how we're entering. That's some detail there. Um, yeah.
So the drop, you're saying the drop is where the margins is at? It's the way the data is.
Yeah. Yes, yeah, because they had, we had had a discussion about like changing how we're entering clients in. And now seeing these numbers, we're like, well, that's not that's not accurately reflecting, so we're gonna go back to how we were doing it before, basically, so. That.
It's the, it's the way before more manual.
No, it's just where we're entering it. So the total client contacts is probably the best reflection of the services that we've done, and so we got that number right, but then the other where it was entered in there, it was just, I was trying to get my staff to not have to enter things in multiple places.
What about like just current cases, just case load, is that, do you have like a like a, like current open cases or something like that? Is that a way to?
Yeah, um they, we keep a list and so um
If not, that's okay, I mean.
Yeah, not, that's part, that's part of the reason because we were leaving our clients open for the month, and so by leaving them open, we weren't actually collecting how often that client was being seen, so that was part, that's actually part of the issue. Okay, so, yeah, so they had, they they do keep track on how often they're how many clients they have, it gets into the, yeah. So, um that being said, they get, have seventeen clients currently enrolled in Impact in the Impact Program and twenty-seven additional active clients that they're they're actively working with between the two of them. With that, um any questions on the numbers or anything? At that, because just that they don't totally reflect appropriately where we're at. Um the care is in ERA funding, that Carrie was reimbursed two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars for the administration part that she's done. For Impact or CHW, we were reimbursed five thousand eight hundred and ninety-three dollars for, from the grant. And I'm excited, we tripled the amount that of our Medicaid reimbursement, which is really the goal that we have is to make that Medicaid keep the position sustainable. So in March, we received one thousand five hundred and eighty-nine dollars from Medicaid. And that's for the CHW work, primarily Paige, Carrie is now starting to see some Medicaid clients as well. So um, Carrie has started going to the jail weekly, um, and so she, every week she goes, Trish is trying to go Thursday afternoon, sees five to ten clients. We really appreciate Matt and the jail staff working with us on that. I think it's gonna start, really, we're gonna start seeing clients have support once they get out of jail in a better way. Also attached to your report that I gave you, the community health worker of South Dakota put this nice document together for us. It's a return on investment, a list of return on investment, so it gives a little summary of the client situation. And then on the backside of that, it talks about the cost savings that we see for having the community health worker support. Um, and so it talks about in this situation, how by help, and this is when that page, a client that Paige helped um, was able to get her into affordable housing, so the client saved money, but we as a community also save money because the client could afford to live. And so it identifies some of those cost savings from that client as well, so I thought that was just a nice report that they did and wanted to share it with you.
That's nice, but it's nice that we're being recognized statewide like that.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
Good representation.
Yep, yeah, great things are happening. Um, as Brenda mentioned, Morgan started in our office. Uh, we had our South Dakota Association of County Welfare Officials meeting last week. I am the president, and so I'll be the president now, uh, from a year from now is when I'll hand that off, so um, there's not a huge amount of responsibility that come with that, just organizing when we meet as a group. I wanted to let you know, I am taking a vacation in June. I know that it's a ways off, but I'm gonna be gone about two weeks in June, and so I just don't want any surprises coming that I'll be gone, I know, no, no. Hopefully. Okay. Well, I I know I'll be leaving it in good hands with Carrie and Paige, though, they'll handle, and Morgan now too, they'll be good. So, um, and then we have the Reaching Rural Conference at the end of this month in April, which we hadn't talked about last time. Um, for the systems of care, we are continuing to work on the housing strategic planning pieces. We moved that meeting to June, but we've identified um, who will be a, who we hope will be attending invites, we'll be going out for that meeting this week from the Watertown Development Company. Our community action team, we're working on that needs assessment, so the community social services needs assessment that should be done, are, they'll be doing those going out and doing those surveys, the uh, probably in May, May and June is when we'll be seeing that happen. And then the childcare, which is really where I've spent a lot of my time in the last month, there's a lot of things happening with childcare. That, um, we are planning a town hall meeting in May, so details will be coming out of that here in the next few months, our next few weeks. By the end of the month, we'll have more information out about all of the childcare things and and what's going on with that. We are also updating the early learner contract. You guys had previously approved the early learner contract, but we needed to make some changes to that. I think it's by the end of this week, we'll have those changes finalized. Um, I've reviewed it with the state's attorney and Becky's approved everything. We just are finalizing the partnerships with that. And then um another agenda item I have, but just to let you know is there's a, the collective impact conference is April thirtieth, May first and second. It's virtual and I attended it last year, but um I'm just requesting to go off-site to do that so that I can actually focus on it and not get interrupted a million times in my office with that, so it's eleven to four on those days, so it's part day, so I'll come into the office in the morning and then if if it's approved, I would go either to the library or my house to watch it in the afternoon. So, um, April thirtieth, May first and second.
The office will still remain open.
Yeah, it'll still be fully stocked and everything. I just wouldn't be on site during that, those times.
Need a motion for that, just number eight.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Motion by Gable, second by Van Duzen to uh authorize uh Sarah to participate in this training offsite. Any more discussion?
It is covered under the grant, just so that you know, there's no cost to the county for me to attend that.
No further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. All right.
Thanks, Sarah.
Yes, have a good day.
Yep. Rick, if you wanna give us an update.
Good morning.
Morning.
Okay. The guys still are crack ceiling when they can. We have a few issues with our cracks either, hopefully we got that straightened out. Cracks are still open, so they're able to work on it. They're probably out there right now. When they're not doing that, they're cutting trees out of the right away. Yesterday, we had a rainy day, so they hauled rock into our our yard, so we'll be able to use this summer. They've got all our mower tractors ready for spring work. Next week, maybe even the end of this week, depending on the weather, they'll start uh doing some disking on the shoulders and pulling shoulders in. They're trying to reclaim some of the gravel that got blew off this winter when things got so dry. Last Tuesday, we uh went to Sioux Falls and picked up our dump truck that we ordered in two thousand twenty-two. Tomorrow, we'll take it to uh Fargo to have the box put on. This was all budgeted items and uh you guys all voted to have it done, so hopefully we'll be able to use our dump truck in the next couple of months. They're they're a little behind up there. They've got some orders they're trying to do, but they wanted it up there, so if they had time, they could start working on it, which made me really happy. Um the funding that we put in for on two bridges, one was on County Road Three north of State Highway two twelve, and the other one was on County Road Six west of the casino. We, we applied for riprap funding for both of those projects. They were both denied. There is all, there's Mark Younger told me how many there was like a hundred and seventy-five projects and there was only like seven million dollars, so hmm, there just wasn't enough money to go around. So we'll put in for those when uh funding comes available again. We
Sorry, which program we said, it's a
That was off the big program for riprap.
Just, okay.
Yes. And uh, we did have a bridge on County Road Eleven, which is four hundred and fifty-fifth Avenue. It'd be eight tenths of a mile north of the South Shore corner. We did get funding for that one. So that will be in the pros- process of being replaced.
This summer?
No, no, it's just a start.
I know, I was gonna say.
Many, many summers probably.
Yeah.
I would say at least three to four years before that one will come into being replaced.
Just in case my neighbors ask.
Yep, yep, I understand. Last week, three members of uh Banner Associates and I met with landowners about the reconstruction project on County Road Twenty, which is one hundred and seventy-sixth Street. Straight south of town in between eighty-one and County Road Eleven. There's a two-mile stretch in there that is scheduled to be regraded this summer, and uh we met with landowners and talked about right away and things like that. And uh, that all went really well. So we'll see what uh what the landowners come up with. They had a few suggestions, you know, on approaches and things like that and but uh hopefully we can get that to bid in May, be completed around the first of November, and then next year it'll get asphalted. So that's in the process. We had our uh superintendent short course in the middle of March. We had fifty-three superintendents that were able to attend. Out of all the superintendents, there's still three or four positions throughout the state that are are still open for superintendents. That makes the number a little bit lower. There's some that can't attend. But it was, it was really good. We had good speakers. The DOT was there, we talked about right away. Rafe funding, LTAP was there, gravel and material, striping. It was, it was a really good conference. And the last one on the list is everybody's favorite, Thirty First Street. I uh received uh email on the twenty-sixth of March from Cody Axland, he's with the DOT. He's the one that does the bridge stuff. And uh those culverts will be put on the bridge inspection list for twenty twenty-four.
Excellent.
And uh, so those belong to the Cottonton County Highway Department now.
Yep. Well, I mean, that's probably best case scenario for that stretch there. So that's good.
Yep, and the barricades, the cement barriers were ordered, so.
What's the, any timeframe on those, when those are gonna be in?
The time of order was about a month.
Okay.
So we still got two or three weeks before those are done, because they had to make all those.
Just in reference to that, I I would share with you and other board members that I have had contacts in reference to that situation. And they said we should just close the road. They said there was a city screwed up and just leave it closed until the city decides what they wanna do with it. And 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 that's been kind of a consistent uh message that I've been receiving now. I I haven't uh, you know, responded with anything, but there's a lot of people that were, that are a little bit upset about uh, I mean, everybody's happy about the new ice facility, but they're a little bit upset about no planning, that the city didn't, you know, look, had enough forward vision to look forward to what that situation was gonna be, and they don't, they they think that we're going above and beyond our responsibility as far as you know, working with them and trying to resolve something. They said that's their problem. And uh, I I just, that's, that's the that's what I'm hearing from some of my constituents. Of course, the ones that I'm hearing from are the ones that are upset, you know? And it's, I just I don't know if any of you others have heard anything from anybody, but uh, that's, just wanna share with you what I'm hearing from our constituents out there.
You know, the people who like to complain are always the ones that are gonna say something.
Yeah.
And I've had a couple of churches say the same thing. Why did the county have to pay for that when it's gonna be an extent of the city?
And it's, and I've had several history lessons on that particular road because of this though, too, and you know, years ago, it could have all been done and taken care of, but according to some people, but uh, it's it's kind of a thorn in our side yet, so.
Well, ultimately, what we have to remember is that road still belongs Del Myra Township. And it's a township road, it's not a city road. And so what we all agreed upon is this commission was to put barriers up there to prevent somebody from driving off the side of the thing and killing someone, so yeah, it's probably is going to become a city street eventually, but until that happens, um I think we have to address the issue, so, and you know, that's my district, I guess, and I haven't received one phone call in opposition to any action we took for those barricades, so I don't know who or how many complaints you get. You say you got quite a few, I haven't received one. So you know, I I don't know, I guess it's I think we're, I I think we took the right action on it, is what I'm saying for the time until it's fixed, so I'm glad to hear that they're put that on the B I G for twenty twenty-four and um, let's hope we can just get it fixed sooner than later.
Yep.
Yep. So.
Yeah, it'll, it's, it'll be put into the big program now, so you know depending on what they come up with, you know, if it's a, if they wanna replace it with culverts again, or or a box culvert or a bridge, you know, that's something that the engineers will come up with, so. But that's also something that we need to address too when we have Rafe funding for culvert on the township that these culverts need to be installed a certain way, so they'll have to be inspected, otherwise if they're not correct, they'll get dumped back onto the county system, so that's part of all that. Engineering is included in that money that the the townships get, so.
I think isn't uh, isn't the plan eventually to to blow that road straight north? Has there been any discussions on that to to come out in the northern half of the city?
I talked to Heath Von I and he said that that first mile you know, it will be up to the developers to do it, and they figured it'd be like seven million dollars to get that in there because the gravel company on the east side of the road, and I know they were gonna crush twenty thousand tonne on the north side of that, or those culverts, and then J and J, which is on the west side of that intersection, they've got a gravel pit further north and they're hauling through there all the time, so closing, it's not an option, you know?
Yeah, but the guy that suggested that, he had an alternative, and it wasn't that bad either. He said they got all the equipment and all the gravel there, they could put another, oh, get over the river at another location. And and he, right, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Well.
They don't, they would have to go over there. There's plenty of places they go over the river. And they got the equipment and the material right there to do it, so.
Yep. But.
Well, anyway, we're glad to hear what's going on to the B I G. I'm glad that the barricades are coming, so it's good, good stuff.
After I visited with the people that I have and in contact with, and I talked about the concrete barriers, I don't think anybody was upset about that, that they understand, they understood our situation, that that's a safety factor, and uh but they also made uh uh, made it very apparent that they don't think that that's a forever fix. And we don't either.
No. No. It's all part of development.
Yep, and I have the the paperwork that was sent to me from uh uh Cody Axland, so if you guys wanna look at it, I've got it here, or I can email it to you. Uh, Cody Axland, so if you guys wanna look at it, I've got it here or I can email it to you, up to you guys, so. Okay, all right. Well, that's all I have for my monthly report.
Thank you, Rick.
Is this uh, action or item nine, uh, sign the National Worksource Awareness? You wanna?
Yep. I was gonna have Troy read it. He's he does a very nice job of these kind of things, so. I'll let him read it and then I'll have a little discussion afterwards.
All right, so this is a proclamation for National Workzone Awareness Week, which is April fifteenth through the nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. Proclamation, whereas National Workzone Awareness Week is an annual spring safety campaign. Held at the start of construction season to raise public awareness for work zones and those who work in them. And whereas, the National Workzone Awareness Week twenty twenty-four is taking place April fifteenth through the nineteenth. To encourage safe driving through work zones and whereas. The twenty twenty-four National Workzone Awareness Week theme this year is work zones are temporary. But your actions behind the wheel will last forever. And whereas motorists are encouraged to slow down to posted speed limits. Eliminate distractions while driving and be watchful for roadway workers, their equipment and vehicles on the side of the road in work zones. And whereas, according to the National Workzone Safety Information Clearinghouse. In twenty twenty-one, there were eight hundred and seventy-four fatal crashes. And nine hundred and fifty-six fatalities in United States work zones. And whereas Cottington County is dedicated to advocating for safe driving and maintaining work safe zones. For both the road worker and the traveling public. And now therefore be it resolved that the Cottington County Board of Commissioners. Declare the week of April fifteenth through the nineteenth, twenty twenty-four to be National Workzone Awareness Week in Cottington County. And to encourage caution in work zones for the safety of all, dated this ninth day of April, twenty twenty-four. Signed Chairman.
Second, a motion by Gable, second by Waterman to approve this um. Work zone awareness, please proclamation. Did you have a comment you wanted to comment, Rick?
Right now I see like up on eighty-one on the north side of town, there's already cones out, so. This starts next week, but construction season pretty much runs whenever construction can be done. And, you know, the sixteen people that I have working. I never want to have to make that call that something happened. Nobody's life is worth looking at your phone. You can't slow down. Teach your kids that when there's something ahead of you. Slow down, you know, it's the easiest thing to do in the world. Nobody's life's worth taking. That family will be have that forever and so will you, so that's why. Just slow down. That's that's the main thing and stay off your darn phones. So that's that's all I have. I've got some papers here that. I'm gonna ask some of the offices to hang them up in their their office.
I think that's a good idea. I know and I I support that this is. And you're right, boy, you get on the interstate sometime and they squeeze you down to, you know, uh, meeting. Traffic head on, you know, side by side and you're all right till you meet that truck, you know, and you kind of cringe. Uh, this is the first time we've ever seen anything like this, so where did, who instigated it?
I got this from Minihaw. And I thought I'd put it out there to do it, so.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. It's it's something that is year round, whether there's snowplows or whether we're doing construction. We gotta pay attention to what's happening on the road.
Yep, and we've got more and more traffic and faster traffic and. It's just, it doesn't take anything to slow down. You know, I'm I'm guilty of myself because I'm always in a hurry to try and get somewhere and. And sometimes I have a little talk to myself when I'm driving down the road, just slow down. In a few miles, you'll be able to pass and get things done, so it's just something to be aware of. That. We're all gonna, construction season's gonna be upon us and. We're all be thinking, I gotta get there, so thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Rick. Um, we have a motion and a second. Um, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Rick.
Um, item ten, uh, discussion possible action to enact a burn ban resolution.
Uh, Andrew was in earlier this morning and his opinion was that we don't need to enact it at this time. Keep it on the menu.
I kind of agree with him, but Randy had a a thought here. Earlier, we're discussing the burn ban situation and and during this past week, we had, they call it what a red flag. It's a, it's a, we get days when it gets dry and the wind's blowing forty, fifty miles an hour. If there was any way that we as a commission could declare a uh. Rather than maybe a one-day burn ban, you might say, in other words, if. If the wind is blowing fifty miles an hour and I guess the the weather. Uh, people do take care of that. They can declare a red flag, don't they?
Yes.
And maybe on those red flag, when they declare the red flag day, maybe we should declare a no burn on those days just for that. Period of time that the red flag period is on. It's good, something that we should discuss and talk about. And then Randy asked the question, how do we get this started? And I thought, well, it should probably come from Andrew from the Emergency Management Department and. I don't know what your thoughts are, but if that's possible, is it doable?
Can I add to that? That was something we did discuss back when we did adopt the present burn ban resolution, so it is something, a process you would have to go through and change that. If you're going to change your process of how you're going to designate if what will signify, you know, taking, putting it on, taking it off. But yes, there are other counties that do use that method as far as red flag warnings. But then it's a matter of if your public catches that or not and to know when and when and when not to do it. That becomes a complicated part.
So it'd be a, it'd be an ordinance or a policy change that we'd have to, and so we'd have to.
Yeah, there's a, there's a a few cogs in the wheel there that would have to be worked out. One is notifying the public. And how do we get that message out? Maybe through the use of social media, maybe through the use of our county page, but also when they call in their controlled burn. Having our folks in the nine-one-one center tell them that currently we're in a, you know, burn ban because of the red flag warning would be. A solution, but it's making sure that all the parties involved are notified. And then when it's lifted, we have to be notified about that as well. Yesterday, we had six controlled burns. Um, in our six counties that were on our map in dispatch and so. Uh, farmers are burning right now while they can. You know, just a couple of weeks ago, we were laughing because we were in a blizzard. And it's the wind came up and it really dried things out. We've had several grass fires. Uh, within our, within our five or six county region here uh, during the past week, um, so it's a, it's a real thing, so I think. Keeping it on the agenda is a good thing. I don't know about the red flag warning thing, though. I think that those are, they move so fast, right? It's like one day and then it's gone. Um, we had one gentleman that called in a controlled burn. He was gonna burn in the morning and he looked at the forecast and saw that the winds were gonna pick up in the afternoon and then called us back and said, no, I've. Decided not to do that, so um, you know, landowners are taking responsibility, which is good. Um, to make sure that that doesn't get out of control, but um. I think that there's a lot of cogs in the wheel if we go that route to to make that happen, but not saying it can't be done, it's just. To make sure that we're doing it the same way every time and that the message is being delivered would be tricky.
Yes, yes. That's good. Okay, um, good discussion. Next one is item eleven, uh, discussion possible action to authorize chair to sign contract with. Architecture Incorporated for the jail design services. Lee, if you wanna.
Yeah, so last week we had this on the agenda, but now it's ready, so that's this large. Contract in front of you, so this is the thing that Tegra has gone over the, when we, when we said. Took action to engage the services of Architect Inc. and H D R. Um, that was basically given authority to Tegra to negotiate this contract that they've done, so they went back and forth a few times. Um, and then the state's attorney looked at the key parts on uh, things like arbitration, liability, those things, so. So the uh, so we've had our experts look at this, the page that probably we need to pay attention to. Um, as county commissioners, um, is on page twenty-two and twenty-three where I feel like how much it's gonna cost. And so that's, that's where you see the, at the bottom of that, the page might too is where you see. Um, the forty thousand dollars for architecting slash H D R. Plus eight hundred dollars for each trip, so so they're probably gonna make something like five trips here. To to walk us through the process. And then on the following page, on page twenty-three, you have the fees, so if the vote passes, you have some, the fees, what it would look like. At the, you know, various hypothetical costs of facilities, so. Um, and like, it's just the jail one, it's just. Uh, you know, or if it's a totally new facility or if it's on the existing, existing site, those kinds of things, so um, so. That's, those are probably the key pages for us to focus on. Uh, and then it's, it serves as a good reference. As they go through all the, all the tasks, so the idea is that, you know, this contract's ready to go. Not just for the pre-designed stuff, getting to the vote, but after the vote as well. And then for some reason, you know, it's just not working out. Then we'd have to go back and, you know, you know, say if we're not happy with the situation at the, after the pre-design. Process and have to go back and, and even if the vote passed, we have to go back and, you know, recompete or buy the new architect, so. Same thing with the construction manager as well, but that's not talking about that way, so. Anyway, then we hit, by the way, I just take the opportunity, Mr. Chair, to mention on Friday, we had our first. Meeting with their tech, so the kind of a worker meeting, they call it the kickoff meeting. And that's uh, where the, you try to go through all the details to what needs to go into a potential building, so. Most of it was back and forth between the architect and H D R and the chair and, you know, so. Chair Powell and then Matt Blackbauer, Chief Corrections Officer of the Jail. And just talking about, it's very interesting, actually, um, there's still some more details, so we're probably gonna have to continue the discussion by Zoom. To finish up some of this stuff, because it got into a lot of details, like you talk about a particular room. In a facility, you say, okay, you want it to be able to do this or that, okay, then then try to identify specific square criteria that needs to be, that need to be included, so then. Then the architect can go back to the drawing board and figure out the puzzle pieces that need to go. So some pretty interesting stuff. Um, we didn't get, get a chance to talk about site criteria, so that's something that's still on most, even though that was on, that was, we hoped to get to that point. So that was Friday, but those kinds of worker be meetings, um, sometimes, you know, in order to save costing expenses, they'll try to do as much as they can by Zoom. Um, occasionally it's probably better if they travel here and that's where that, each of those trips is gonna cost eight hundred dollars, so anyway. There you go. Now I make a motion to approve, to help this chair to sign this this contract.
Motion by Gable.
Second.
Second by Van Duzen to uh, approve this contract with the uh, architect. Incorporated. Is there any more discussion?
Here, where, where in the budget is this money coming from?
So the, that's, that's the seventy thousand dollars that we approved as they.
I mean, is that, is that gonna cover it?
Yeah, that's, yeah, forty thousand dollars. Now, the eight hundred dollars a trip, you know, that might be something we kick out of.
That's why we gotta be careful. I alluded a little bit earlier that I kind of get the heartburn when I was reading the, the bills from this last month. Twelve years I've been here and I think that probably the, one of the higher ones, if not the highest, monthly one point seven million bucks, we gotta be. You know, we got a responsibility to our constituents to make certain we're still running this place in the black. And we gotta, I'm not saying that we shouldn't do it, do it this, I'm just saying we need, we need to be aware.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I could add, um, so, you know, as you, as you guys know, you know, all of our consultants, you know, are willing to assume a lot of risk, you know. Focus at the votes for the past, so they're giving us pretty good deals on these consultancies, so. You know, forty thousand is a lot lower than the initial proposal from this particular architecture team. I mean, it's five bucks, you know. It's less than half of what they offered and Tegra helped us through that, asking them, can you please assume some risk? And so, uh, so that's why we got such a good deal on this and while we're able to fit all those consultants within that seventy thousand dollars budget, so. Um, so it's budgeted, um, the, you know, all of these consultants, the architect, structure manager. Tegra, our owner's rep, uh, they're all working with us to, to help us save money, um, as we go through this.
Well, on page twenty-three, the rolls estimated, whatever you want to call it, between twenty-five and thirty million dollars.
That's, that's as far as the, the contract goes, just so we have some numbers to hypothetical amount, so it could cost. You know, it could cost, it's probably gonna come out to be a different amount where we needed something. So basically, if the facility costs more, the percentage, the the fee percent, you know, the percentage, the size of the fee, percentage-wise. Goes down a little bit.
So there's no estimated fee of what this is gonna cost.
Well, you. Yeah, so no, we have to, that's what we're hiring them to do is to work through that, so.
Any more discussion or questions? It's all, all good discussion. There's, there's gonna be a lot of questions. We just want to make sure we got everything out in front as good as we can, so.
Mr. Chair, if I could come back to Commissioner Waterman's question, so, so one of the things that's unique about this iteration, so. Tegra, our own rep, they're kind of basically a construction manager, uh, consultant, for lack of a better term. Um, they're the ones that really suggested not the, and we already did this, we took action last week to, to ask Tegra to negotiate a contract with the construction manager at risk. That was Beckenhour, um, and that's the thing, so that's gonna get us to a more accurate estimate about what the cost is. So they have to work through the process right now. They're, you know, they just started talking about specific floor spaces and specific needs, and so the idea is to get as much. Specificity on that, and it's a little bit different than it did last time, so it was a lot more conversational, I, it was kind of a. Interesting thing to watch and observe on conversation. Um, between, you know, the users and the person who you're asking to design it, so pointing to these spots, because that's where the architect is sitting in. Sheriff and the jail, the jail guys were sitting over there, but um, so that was interesting to watch, and so the idea is to give as much detail as you can. To understand the need and then by having the construction manager who was also present at the meeting, um, that I represented from Beckenhour. Um, then you get a better idea of what those costs, I guess, we, we, we want to look for this construction manager that's currently involved in jail projects in the, in the Midwest. And so, and that's, that's the idea, so. So we want to get, you know, obviously we want to get it fairly accurate.
I, I do, and that's fine and dandy, I would just, there is about the bottom line. My second curiosity lies in how is this gonna be funded? I've heard bonding in the past, I've heard sales, not sales deck, but real estate tax increase.
That's what the law says. I mean, that's basically, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I said, we were following the law, you know, of course, but people like to know what they're gonna be paid for.
Yeah, can. Well, maybe we can come back to this, to this commission comments if you want to, I'll be happy to continue.
Yeah, let's, let's just pertain to this motion, the motion.
So we have a motion second.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second, um. If there's no more discussion, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item twelve is an action to approve a fireworks show permit.
Right, you have that in your packet. Uh, this is something, you know, that we have approved in the past. Um, it says the, the date will be July twelfth. Wrong one, sorry. No, it does say that, twenty twenty-one. They have the wrong date on there. I don't know where they got that from. I didn't notice that till now. Um, so it's at four, six, three, four, five, one sixty-sixth Street. And the time will be from nine thirty to eleven. Jared Burke is the individual who will be in charge of the discharging. Um, I guess typically, you know, if there's a burn ban in place, these are not allowed to happen, but so you base your approval with that. However, you want to state that.
I'll make a motion to approve. On no burn ban being in place.
Motion by Van Duzen. Second by Gable. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Item thirteen is action to approve the auditor's account with treasure and monthly registered deeds fees.
All right, so you see that at the end of the month of March, we had some over thirty-three million. Um, the custodial funds, the amount that gets apportioned out to. Um the custodial funds, the amount that gets apportioned out to the schools, this is just some over a million, the township's be seventy two thousand. And some, and then the city and towns is five hundred sixty eight, six oh one fifty three, so those get apportioned out to those entities every month. And then the second page is just breaks it down. Um all of the cash and and um other funds that we count at the end of the month. And then the monthly registered deeds fees for um the end of March is sixteen thousand one oh four ninety. Unless you have any questions.
Motion by Johnson, second by Gable to uh approve our uh. Auditor's account with the treasurer. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
We have no nothing for fourteen.
Uh item fifteen, action to approve claims for payment.
Right, so you did get those, um you know, I don't know if there's anything in particular. You'll notice there was uh the truck came out in the highway department, that was a hundred and thirty thousand. Um all of our insurance came due at South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance, so the total amount overall that the county needs to pay is. A hundred and seventeen thousand eight thirty eight ninety four. Um other than that, if there's any other. Anything else that jumps out, otherwise, um our state passed through amount that we have, that we are um. Need to pay to the state of South Dakota was six hundred twenty six thousand five hundred and twelve. Um twenty one, so that leaves an ending amount for the counties of one million ninety six thousand eight hundred ninety one oh three. That is what our county amount came to this month. Is that in government buildings?
Yeah.
That was for some of the work that they had done, um yeah, that they've completed.
Another question that I have is. I man, the uh. Jury, they they, there's two pages of the.
Yep, so the names and everything are are taken off just for privacy reasons, but those are the total amounts then that they receive for. You know, being a witness or, you know, this or that, so I try to leave the things in, like the supplies, that amount, but. We redact out the names.
Now, my my question really is that, I know we have catastrophic law.
Yep.
Uh where does that kick in?
Yes, um actually, there this will be one that will qualify, we were putting that stuff together to submit that. And we have one other one that was quite some time ago that has been put together and will be getting submitted. Um. I can't remember the threshold off the top of my head, I had it, but they will qualify. So we will be sending in to try to re uh recoup some of those dollars.
And and you you know the.
I think we gotta pay the first twenty five thousand, I believe that's what it is.
The next court meeting is from Monday, but I don't think they are done, this will be ready by then.
No, no, we have one other one from previously that's pretty put together, we're gonna be sent sending in to see.
That's a pretty good sized chunk right there, just wondering if we heard.
Yes.
Catastrophic, we didn't cover any of it.
I'm glad to have that insurance, because twenty five thousand's a lot less than what a murder trial.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so we will be submitting for the this last one that we're all aware of, and then there is a previous one that hadn't been sent in yet, so. Yes, hopefully, we will be um able to recoup some of those dollars.
So we need a motion for that?
Yep, I do.
I'll take them, I'll make the motion.
Motion by Van Duzen, second by Gable, uh to approve these claims for payment, any more discussion?
Well, I I know I sound like a uh old grandpa here, but that's what I am, I guess, when I think about it, but I mean, I get, I I guess. The older they get, the more concerned we get about staying within the budget, staying within our resources and. And uh I hope that our our employees have always been good, I just, I I can't say enough good things about. Our s- our staff and our employees in the county and they submit a budget and and they've always. There've been a couple situations which was no fault of their own, but where we had to supplement the budget, and I do not like to do that. I I don't wanna do that.
That may happen, you know, with a few of our budgets. We'll see how they turn out at the end, we don't wanna do commissioner contingency till, you know, till their budget is expended, we want them to expend everything they can. Oh no, that we have no control over.
Those times, I think that I understand that.
Yeah.
But uh I I don't know, maybe you need to drive that truck or that pickup or that motor grader another year or something, but. Help us out, is what I'm saying, okay?
Any more discussion? Uh all those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Nothing for sixteen.
Okay, item seventeen, action to approve commissioner contingency transfer.
Right, so like I said, typically, we don't do this till the end of the year, but this is in regards to our coroner budget with him having to purchase that van. And also the cost of the insurance for it, um so those two dollar amounts come to fifty five thousand. Two hundred seventy two dollars and nineteen cents, so if you would agree to do a commissioner contingency transfer to the corner budget in that amount.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Motion by Van Duzen, second by Gable to uh approve this contingency transfer.
Fifty five, two seventy two nineteen.
Any more discussion?
I'm not gonna say anymore, I always said it. But I hope everybody's understanding where I'm coming from.
Okay.
We've already approved the purchase of it.
Yeah, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Eighteen, um approval for personal changes.
Yes, we do have several of those, uh first one, well, they might not be in order anymore. Jeff Riley, so he's a seasonal summer help rehire. Uh his new step would be one, his new rate of pay is sixteen dollars and seventy four cents, and this is for maintenance in the highway department. Also, um John Ingles, who is a rehire seasonal assistant weed supervisor in the weed department. New step is D D three, which is new rate of pay will be twenty three dollars and seventy cents. Uh another individual for the seasonal park neck technician rehire, Steve Rondell. Uh his new step is B B uh one eighteen fifty seven. Effective date of hire for him is four fifteen, I didn't say, uh same thing with John Ingles, four fifteen. And uh Jeff Riley will be made first, I've just omitted to say that, Steve DeVille. Um seasonal memorial park rehire custodian. Uh effective date of hire is four fifteen, twenty twenty four, B B number uh six, nineteen ninety seven.
Move to approve.
Motion, motion by Johnson, second by Waterman to approve the personnel changes. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Nineteen is action to approve travel requests.
Yep, we have several of those, there's state's attorneys, staff to attend an annual conference. Um she noted there's a partial reimbursement available that will be applied for. Um also, we have several for the detention center, they have some instructors, a couple of them in. Uh attending an instructor renewal class, also a couple more instructors um. Doing P P C T renewal class, TASER training certificate renewal. Certification renewal, I should say, for TASER training. To um. Another detention staff will be going to a development class at L E T. Whatever that stands for. That's a correction officer, um community service office will be attending the helpline. Uh center transition to success training. Think that encompasses all of them.
Need a motion to approve travel.
Second.
And motion by Gable, second by Van Duzen to approve travel requests, any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh public notices, um. Any uh. For possible quorum of commissioners?
On the fifth day, we're in a. We're not in a zoning meeting, but I think that's a standard.
Yeah, yep.
Three six. Of course, uh this afternoon and tonight is gonna be uh. Hearing, I guess you call it hearing or, that's what I would say, anyway, equalization.
Yeah, so it's my appeals.
And there'll be a uh. A quorum of these. And uh I will be in here at the retirement board meeting. And you know, that's it.
Hey, is that next week, Mark, that you're gone?
Well, to this afternoon, I believe.
Tomorrow, okay, okay.
Tonight or this afternoon.
Okay, okay.
Okay, uh item twenty one, is there any old business?
Just to follow Mr. Chair on the um, we can discussion about uh, you know, new jail architect, et cetera, uh. So a couple, couple things on the uh. As I said, we had a very interesting meeting Friday, so that process is gonna continue as to sort through. And pretty much in a lot of detail, the needs of the actual space, you know, actual square footage of rooms, and so that, so. The bulk of that discussion took place on Friday, we need to finish up some things, probably by Zoom. Um and probably later this week, we'll get to that, and then um. We didn't get to site criteria discussion, we, you know, I've seen, we, one of the things, we we do know that we need to evaluate our current jail. See what the possibilities are for uh remodeling that, that's one of the dangers in the in the conflict with the architect. Um they give us a, you know, help us understand that option, um and then looking at, you know, once we have some criteria, seriously, start talking about. Some some possible other sites we might be thinking about, um and then to to come back to the funding question. Um yeah, I mean, the way the way the law is set up, if you, if people wanna compare cities and counties, um. And we get this question a lot, so probably I'll I'll repeat this just to make sure it's it's clear, because it's a little bit, it's a little bit. Um I guess interesting for people, um so cities have a second penny sales tax, and that allows them to to manage multiple projects, you know, they can. They can fund twenty year bonds, you know, and or whatever term, you know, you know, that they that they need to uh to bond a uh a building for. So you have the well, the center of the ice rink, and those are all good things for the community, um you know, you know, clear quality of life things, and that's. Cities have the opportunity to do that with that second penny, um in the case of counties, you know, we get told we need to, by law, that we have to provide incarceration space. Um in the case of a county like like Cotton, and that means we need to have jail, and it needs to be adequate and safe. Um and able to perform the functions that it needs to needs to perform. Um but we don't have, counties don't have sales tax in South Dakota, so the way, basically, the way it's put together is. You, counties can collect property tax, and that that pays for most things um day to day. But when you have to do something uh out of the ordinary, like build a build an expensive building up to jail, then the way the law works is you. You have to go back to the property, all we have is property tax. And um you know, there are counties where it, you know, county commissioners just make pass a resolution and they raise property tax, the law allows that, but everything's referable. Um so in the case of Cotton, then it's probably, it's probably smart just to refer it initially, that also allows us to get a better bond rate, so it saves us a bit of money. Um with voter approval as well, so that's that's the way the law is put together, so neither not, you know, city city funding streams don't affect county funding streams and vice versa. Um and just so people understand, you know, the county is is uh has the duty of collecting property tax, but not just for the county. Uh so roughly thirty ish percent, and it depends on people's individual property tax bill, but only about thirty percent of the property tax collected by the county. Actually goes into the county budget, now the bulk of it goes to the school district, that's, you know, sixty ish percent, and then then there's another. Other other parts go to the city, you know, or the pen, or or where you live, your your town or your your township, um. And a few other things, I think there's a water district as well, so um you know, that if, just take a look at your property tax bill, you see how that's divided up, but it we do, I think people wonder a lot about funding. So I just wanted to to mention that, and that's, we'll come back to it again, contact me or the auditor loves to get questions to, we have questions about this, so. Anyway, thanks.
Yes, thanks, Commissioner Gable.
An explanation.
Um is there any uh new business? Okay, now it's time for the open, if there's need for a public comment. Uh seeing none, uh any more commissioner comments? Uh seeing none, um it's no need for an executive session.
Move to adjourn.
Motion by Johnson, second by Gable to adjourn, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, meeting adjourned.